I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. Item number one is public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council? Public comment, hearing none. Go to item number two. Cox?
Mayor and council, as you know, Keith Metzler has been working on this for some time and he is here and prepared to make a presentation in regard to this program and then also staff is available for questions from the council afterwards.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the item before you this evening involves a program that staff has been working on for at least a year now and that is a program that is not new in the investor visa world involving the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services Department, but it is new to Victorville and we've worked with the council previously to get direction to pursue the diligence required to prepare a regional center and then also have worked with you to seek advice in structuring this program so that it not only satisfied your interests, but it's satisfied the interest of what's needed in terms of a financing mechanism for all of the various activities that the city is involved in. I think just from a very general, big picture perspective, the USCIS on an annual basis is permitted pursuant to the laws that govern its authority, they're permitted on an annual basis to issue 10,000 investor visas and there's two different classifications that involve the investor visa. The original concept involved trying to encourage high wealth individuals that are interested in obtaining a visa in the United States, allowing them to do so by through the investment in private business and very generally that investment concept asked for each prospective candidate to invest up to a million dollars in a private entity, in a private enterprise. And that program is still in place today. An offshoot of that is the pilot program that we're working with now, the EB5 Investor Visa Program, which makes the requirements a little less onerous with respect to the investment required by the individual investors. It also has a much more different purpose in mind and that's to stimulate economic development within targeted employment areas throughout the United States. This is not specific to Victorville. This is a program that is done throughout the U.S. and in multiple locations as a part of this diligence process. We looked at a number of them, Philadelphia, Tacoma, there's one in Los Angeles County that come to mind and in structuring our program, we looked very carefully at some of the other programs that are out there. On January 15th, 2009, staff, the city submitted an application to the USCIS to consider the City of Victorville as a regional center. That regional center application consisted of a very voluminous document. It was an application that required creating the overall structural element that makes up the regional center and that's not just the designation itself, but how functionally it's going to work and I'll have an opportunity to go over the functional elements with you because there is a very methodological process that goes into actually effectuating this program. A key, an operative word in the whole EB5 Investor Visa Program is investing proceeds into what's called qualified investments and our application identified four qualified investments and as you can see in the overhead, those projects involve the SCLA wastewater treatment facility, the SCLA electrical generation projects, intermodal rail improvements, and general infrastructure improvements at SCLA. And there's two qualifiers in defining what a qualified investment is. First, you have to have the capital project, the capital need, which is what those four represent and you also have to have a nexus to jobs and there's a very basic requirement imposed for any investment that it create both direct and indirect jobs. So as a function of our application, we had to retain an economic consultant to develop a methodology that was acceptable.
Before you get to that area right there, do you have to pre-qualify project areas? I mean, we've got four that are very good here and they're pretty, especially the infrastructure, they're pretty broad, but what if another project come up next week? How quickly can that project concept be built into this EB5?
We would have to go back to the USCIS. We would have to work with them to modify the actual application. Similar analysis would have to be done to where we establish the nexus to whatever the project is that we're trying to qualify, that in fact there is a jobs component attached to it. If we can reasonably do that, then there's no reasonable reason why the USCIS would not permit.
How quickly would that kind of a thing happen? Maybe just, I know it's a guess, but.
Yeah, it would be a guess. I really don't know.
A month, a year?
I'd say a few months, probably two to three months.
Federal government?
If I had to guess. But we're dealing with a federal organization and to give you a perspective of time, we submitted the application in January of this year and finally got an approval in June. So we're subject to a higher authority.
All right, thank you.
Keith, I have a follow-up question on that. All those projects are located at SCLA. What if we had a project outside? Could we include that and we went through the process?
The regional center designation is for the boundaries that are coterminous with the city. So to the extent there was another project in another part of the city, we would go through that process of amending the application with the USCIS, convince that the jobs nexus is there and once we got the approval from the USCIS, then we could in effect raise money for that project. Our application applied for these four qualified investment projects and identified a need for $100 million in funds. That's not a license to go out and raise money right away. Any prudent lender would still require a diligence involving a buyer and determining ability to repay. So this is not just a license to go out and raise money and arbitrarily raise money without having a competence level that there is an ability to repay from a borrower. I'll get into that structure a little bit later. But I think it's important to keep in mind the $100 million capital need that was identified as a part of the application because going forward, our first tranche, our first project is only dealing with a portion of that. On June 19th, we did receive the letter from the USCIS. They have approved after having worked with them for some time and even had to modify or be more clear in our application about certain elements. They actually approved the regional center designation, which brings us to the point that we're at right now and that is actually effectuating the program and creating the necessary mechanisms so that we can actually perform the advisory roles necessary to enlist private companies to raise funds on the behalf of a borrower. Certainly, there's a reason for us in pursuing this. It definitely offered us another financial tool and that's really what this becomes if you look at this as a tool to help raise money for SCLA and/or city economic development related projects. And especially in today's market, we probably look as if we are maybe a little bit. It might be that we're looking a little smarter than perhaps perceived in that this program is probably the only real program out there, given what's happening in the financial markets, that we can really have some meaningful confidence in, in being able to raise money for our capital needs. Maybe expanding on that, and this type of program actually fits perfectly into the capital structure that we have developed for the sewer plant. You'll recall in previous council meetings in approving the capital structure for the sewer plant, the very basic structure was initially, we would use on a short-term basis our cash resources and then take out our cash resources with intermediate term financing. Intermediate term very generally is defined as being longer than short-term, but not as long as long-term. Short-term is one year, long-term is typically beyond 10 years. And in the case of the sewer plant financing, we have been relying and in fact, we've been on the market, we've actually been trying to raise money and the plan right now that we're actually marketing is to raise five-year term notes to be refinanced eventually after we get the plant up and running. This program, the way the loan structure is set up is practically identical to that intermediate financing piece that we're actually including as a part of the capital plan. So this program actually fits very well into our overall financing goals and it not just being an additional tool, it's actually going to be serving a very direct purpose. Another interesting point in all of this, and this maybe gets ahead of some of the presentation material, but in looking at the financial resources that we have committed so far in this program, at first glance, it might look like a lot, it is a lot, but when you look at the traditional world of municipal finance, and we've got a lot of experience in that, and each and every time we go out and raise money, we go out and issue a bond, there are substantial costs associated with the issuance of debt. This gives us an opportunity to use money and employ money to help at the end of the day, reduce our long-term costs associated with issuing debt. So in theory, if we were to rely on this program in greater degree to where we used it more as an intermediate piece for other financings, the cost of issuance is already born. So the more and more we rely on this program, the more stretch we get out of that initial capital that's been ceded. So it's also helpful and it's cost-effective from that perspective. This chart is intended to try to outline the functional element. There are a lot of moving parts to this program. And I think number one, to speak to the regional center. The regional center, everything starts with the regional center and the regional center is two things. It's the geographic designation that I spoke to, but it's also a nonprofit organization that shall operate independently and it shall be responsible for identifying qualified investments and it shall dictate when investment monies or investment pools are to be raised. In fact, the way mechanically it's intended to work is when it's been decided that there's a qualified investment project, when it's been decided that there's an amount of money to be raised, then it will solicit qualified companies, private entities, to participate in that fundraising campaign. It will do so by entering into an agreement. The agreement that I actually have attached in your presentation material is called the advisory agreement and that's the reflective document that's intended to memorialize how the relationship works. And right now, currently, the way we have it contemplated is that we would work with a private company, we're calling it the Regional Center, I'm sorry, Regional Center, Victorville Regional Center, VRC1. That's an entity that's actually comprised of inland development as the general partner and the final makeup of that limited partnership would be the actual individual investors. It goes out and identifies to be a part of the financing conduit. The limited partnership serves as a conduit, as a financing vehicle to actually raise the money. In this program, the way it would be structured initially, it's laid out that way for the $25 million. It's conceived that if we decided to pursue the additional funds for the other projects, then we would open up that role, responsibility to not only inland as the Victorville Regional Center partnership, but also to other qualified companies and we would actually create a competitive environment to build a relationship with that limited partnership entity.
The rail intermodal comes to mind is a project that could certainly have a definable number like, let's say, $100 million and grow into a $250 million project. How do you incrementally move this thing into that? We go out, we've got a project now, we've got $100 million, we go after it, let's say we get it all lined up. Are you limited in acquiring more money, more investors with saying, we're not committed yet, but it looks to us like this project is moving into a much bigger picture. Is it easier, can we go out and acquire more than that $100 million or is the project limit the amount you go when each time you put your application in?
Right now, the approval that we have received from the USCIS is limited to the $100 million. So it would have to similarly go through a modification. We would have to go through the same economic analysis to determine that by raising more money, that there is the jobs nexus still there to sustain the investor visa requirement.
Where, what part of a process do we get pregnant enough with that idea that we would begin the paperwork to get the additional funding source coming back into us or do you wait until you sign on the dotted line and somebody, I'll use Burlington for example, they say, we want to do this intermodal and our initial good is going and six months later, they say, oh, you know, we're going to expand this to 200 million. Is that the moment when we begin our work or do we anticipate that so that we're saving time in that process? What's, where's that?
I wouldn't advise raising the money in advance of the actual commitment, the actual signing on the dotted line. One of the responsibilities that we have before even signing on that dotted line is developing the capital plan to actually fund whatever obligations might be made to make that transaction work. So no, I would not speculate. And I say that for business reasons, I also say that from a timing standpoint. When we decide to raise funds, there's a clear clock that starts and we have five years to facilitate the investment, to facilitate the construction of the capital project, to ensure the repayment of that money back from the borrower to the limited partner and there's a time within that five-year window that you have to clearly demonstrate that those jobs were created.
That clock starts when the money's in the bank here for us? Tomorrow, we can spend it, the five years starts then or back six months ago when the paperwork started?
When the money is, when the money is raised and the investment vehicle is created, the loan is created.
Who oversees this, Keith?
That's a good question and I'm going to try to go slow because there's a lot of interrelationship between the nonprofit, the limited partnership, and the borrower. But going back to the nonprofit, I stopped at saying that it was responsible for identifying the partner. It's also responsible for approving anything transactional in nature that creates that limited partnership. So it's going to review the business plan, it's going to review the limited partnership agreement. One of the questions that through this exercise of working with you on this that has come about relating to, well, how do we ensure that in fact, the money gets repaid to the investors? And that's why this role of being the nonprofit board is so critical, is it carries a large responsibility in ensuring that they've reviewed the legal documents, creating this limited partnership, even though it's not a party to it. It's going to approve the limited partnership agreement. It's going to be responsible for ensuring that the provisions are in there necessary to provide the adequate protections that when the money is repaid from the borrower, whoever that might be, that there is a distribution mechanism set up legally in that document that says how the individual investors get paid. So the regional center is going to be identifying the qualified investments, they're going to be the ones that make the call or make the announcement that there's a fundraising opportunity, they're going to solicit the prospective limited partner, they're going to review the limited partner and they're going to be the approval entity before any advisory agreement is signed, authorizing a limited partner to go out and proceed, go out and start marketing, go to China, go to wherever and start raising the money.
We would have to go to China or wherever to?
No, we don't necessarily have to. I think starting out, there's probably going to be some travel required. Hasn't gotten into the detail of who and what is the best way to approach that. But the limited partnerships role is marketing. Their primary role at the end of the day is to go out and identify the investors, go to wherever they have to go, talk to them, sit down with them, prescreen them to determine eligibility and if they get through that process, then try to transition them into applying for the actual investor visa and then turning them into a limited partner in the limited partnership.
And who would pay for these travel agreements?
That's on the ledger of the limited partner. That is a cost of doing business that is a part of the whole business plan. They have to demonstrate to the regional center that they have the funds capable of actually fulfilling the responsibility. The last thing that we want to do at the end of the day is license somebody to go out and raise funds and find out after we've licensed them to move forward that they don't have the wherewithal, the financial backing, the business plan, the network, and even a code of ethics in approaching and dealing with the raising of funds in foreign markets.
This wouldn't come from the City of Victorville as far as we'd be putting money out there for the travel and for the?
There's two different ledgers. I can't, I can't answer that directly. There's two different ledgers. You're going to have a ledger, a balance sheet, you're going to have a budget for the nonprofit and it very well could be that the nonprofit decides, especially in the early stage, that it needs to be supportive in the marketing effort to help develop credibility in the foreign market that whoever we choose, in this case, it's inland for the first tranche, that they are supported by the regional center. Going forward, not necessarily sure how important that's going to be for the regional center to continue to do on an ongoing basis, but on the ledger of the actual limited partner, that is their absolute responsibility, that is their absolute cost.
There's one more thing in this packet that we received. There's a, from the regional center award, USCIS on June 19th, 2009, excuse me, there is a application request for designation as a regional center and the applicant is John Roberts.
That was part of the transition. That's something that we are going to rectify. When the application was originally submitted in January, he was the primary contact, he was the lead responsible on the city's behalf in actually pursuing this program. That was something that was never changed in the application process. When John transitioned from the organization, I then was asked to be involved and I have been. I was actually involved in support to John when he was here, so naturally, it made sense for me to continue the transition and take the lead. But going forward, in fact, that's one of the to-dos on our go-forward with the USCIS So I think with that, I've identified the regional center, the nonprofit, as a functional responsibility. You've got a limited partnership, which is a functional responsibility and they're responsible not only for marketing, they're responsible for raising the funds, but they're also responsible for actually lending the money to the borrower, whoever it might be. And the borrower could be SCLA, it could be another entity. I've seen it in other regional centers where the borrower is a private entity and it's an actual developer, where the developers used regional center money as a part of their structured finance in like mezzanine-type financing. So the limited partnership would lend money to a borrower and as a part of the documentation process, the regional center, the nonprofit, is still responsible for even reviewing and understanding and agreeing to the loan document that's actually going to be in place, creating the loan between the limited partnership and the borrower. For the sake of being practical, right now, we are raising, what the proposal is, is to raise $25 million. That $25 million would be raised over the term of 12 months. In fact, there's a performance standard built into the documents that we have to date that clearly identify that that is their responsibility within 12 months to raise that amount of money and lend it to the Southern California Logistics Airport. What we would do internally is use that money to replace some of the capital investment made by the airport authority in the sewer plant. So it would actually take out, it would serve the purpose of taking out some of the cash resources that we've used on a short-term basis.
Is that with any interest, Keith, the loan?
Yes, that is a good question. The loan currently is structured as a five-year loan. It does carry an interest component of 5%. One of the requirements, as a function of this whole program, is that the loans, the investments that are made by the individual investors have to be at risk. So this is not something that they can just unilaterally lend over without being compensated for the risk. So there is a interest rate component tied to it, it's 5%. 5% actually, when we've compared it, is actually very generous and we do believe that it'll actually make us more competitive in the marketplace as we're raising money, but that 5% is also a very, a good cost of capital for us as the airport authority being the borrower, because right now, for us to raise money privately, we're much in excess of The third entity in this case is the airport authority. We're going to probably decide if that needs to change for the purpose of this model. It might be that we make the water district the borrower and I say that only because we have to decide internally who should, of the capital structure, fronting the cost for the sewer plant, who should get paid first, who has the greater priority need in terms of their capital improvement program. Both entities have their own capital improvement plans, their own capital improvement priorities. So we've got to do an internal decision or we've got to internally decide who should get paid first. Should it be in the water district in fact? Should it be a portion made available to the water district and a portion of the airport authority? We'll work that detail out, but for the sake of just being illustrative, we've got this set up as the airport authority. And actually, that's how the documents have been approved with the USCIS as the airport authority, being the borrower. At the end of the day, there's a large reporting responsibility and it's the primary reporting responsibility of the nonprofit and the nonprofit is responsible for being the entity that proves to the USCIS, investments have been made, the investments have been successful, the investments have created the jobs, which serves the overall intent of the program. I'm going to back up one bit. One thing that I haven't gone over is the flow of funds. As I've talked about, the investment being in principle $500,000, there is a cost associated with the transaction and the limited partnership is going to be enabled to charge a fee on top of the $500,000. The way it's structured right now, from that fee that they charge, the regional center will also charge a fee, will actually retain a portion of that fee that the limited, that any limited partnership charges to cover our costs associated with administration, but also associated with what we've put into this thing. And one of the things that we'll do going forward is tally up all of the costs that have been put into this program to date and if it's been a funding source within the city such as the SCLA that's been funding or fronting these costs, we'll actually memorialize a loan relationship between that funding source and the nonprofit so that over time, the nonprofit repays the debt that's been incurred as a result of the city pursuing this program. The nonprofit will also be responsible for funding an operating budget and very generally established, and this is what we did present to the USCIS, this is what we conceived as an operating budget. In large part, it includes costs associated with the administration or certain administrative members of my department and the way we propose or certain administrative members of my department, and the way we're proposing the structure is that the Department of Economic Development be contracted as the managing entity for the nonprofit organization. So with that, a lot of the administrative costs are just borne by staff, a shifting of expenses, basically. There's a very modest travel budget, and from outside assistance, we definitely expect a need for some legal assistance and also some financial advisory staff.
The $4,000 per investment, then, would generate your budget for $200,000?
Staff went ahead and prepared a number of recommendations, which are before you. I think the very fundamental purpose of this discussion was to bring you up to speed as to where we've evolved to over the course of the last seven months since the application was first submitted. But with doing that, we have to take a clear action with respect to actually authorizing the formation of the nonprofit. So the staff is recommending that we go ahead and proceed in doing that. I think it'd be helpful as well, and it's been incorporated as a recommendation that this board take action as to lending the services of its economic development department to serve as a contract management entity for that organization. Authorize staff to finalize the advisory agreement. That's the, there's some cleanup work that needs to take place with that agreement, but that has been enclosed as a reference material in the documents that were provided to you, and that document, again, is important mainly because that is the license that is entered into between the nonprofit and the limited partnership before anybody can go out and raise funds. And then authorize the mayor to execute a letter of understanding. And one of the things that we found important, both myself and the city manager talking with you as council members, we definitely found some concerns going through the process, and we've addressed them through this letter of understanding, so that, going forward, it was clear that with respect to things like exclusivity and cost recovery, that as we've been working with Inland in setting this up, that there wasn't an inherent or a perceived sense of belief that what we were doing was creating an exclusivity for them, or creating an opportunity for them to make money without us being able to recover our costs. That was the direct result of a meeting that staff had with Inland in early June, and to effectuate that understanding, we are asking that the mayor execute that. That's the presentation. I think there's two things that I wanted to add, just to bring clarity to a couple of issues. One is on the exclusivity matter, and while it was reported in the newspaper this morning that what we're doing is providing exclusivity, at least the headline said that, and certainly in the text, it started to suggest differently. What we're doing does not constitute an exclusivity. We are working with Inland for the first fundraising effort. The letter of understanding clearly is intended to make it clear on, for both parties involved, that there isn't an exclusivity going forward. One of the things that we were required as a part of the application is, how is this going to work? And we couldn't have submitted this application and got approved without identifying an entity, an entity that had an ability to demonstrate the experience to go out and raise these funds. The Inland Group has assembled a team that has experience in immigration-related matters, and also has experience in the fundraising component associated with these investors. We do expect to open up competitively to other entities. There are a number of them out there. But I think one thing should be clear is that, as we're working with them on the first tranche of $25 million, nothing marries us to them, let's just say, during the course of the 12 months as they're working on the fundraising for the one qualified investment sewer plant. I don't expect it to happen, but if it were to happen, to where we had a need to raise funds for another project, another of the four projects, and we needed to raise those funds coterminous with the fundraising activity that's occurring by the Inland team, we could, in essence, as the regional center, open up the opportunity to consider not only them, but other prospective interested participants. So, from that perspective, I don't necessarily believe that the depiction of it being exclusive to them is entirely accurate.
But are, we are not giving them the first 12 months, the exclusive for the first 12 months, Keith?
For the first tranche.
The $25 million, that? And on page seven of this report, right in the middle, on that page, go ahead and structure for the, our CVD staff is advising that the board of directors be submitted to the Brown Act, and that the city council appoints two council members and the city manager, and serve as a non-paid, which is fine, which we should, but, again, I'm not comfortable with that. I think the whole council, as a whole, should be involved in hearing the process and the progress that we're making, because not too long ago, the two of us were informed that we were kept out of the loop, and that we had been brought up. I think that needs to stop. I think all five of us are involved, and when the paper says that it's a 5-0 vote, we need to know why, and who did vote for or against.
I put that in there, I should have been clear, and I apologize. I put that in there more to force the point that a decision needs to be made with respect to the governing structure of the nonprofit. I personally do not have a preference as to what the makeup of that is. It is critically important that, going forward, we do have a structure that this council can decide on as to how that organization is going to be represented. I came up with this concept mainly because it was somewhat compatible with previous concepts that we've had, more particularly involving the nonprofit for the housing stuff, the VPDC. I'm not married to this idea. I even know that legal counsel has some opinions that probably the council needs to weigh in on as well, because there are different elements of risk to the council, depending upon how this organization is structured, but I don't-
Hey, may I make a point on that point while we're discussing it? Thank you. The issue that has arisen is incompatibility of office. The threshold issue, which we haven't yet been able to satisfy ourselves with fully, is whether or not serving on that board would be a, quote, "public office," end quote. If that determination is made that, yes, it would be a public office, then you come into the arena where possibility of incompatible public offices exist. There's a standard in the law, was recently codified from common law, that sets forth what, if any of various things exist, then you can have an incompatibility of office. The problem with incompatibility of office is if it is determined that it exists in that, the law automatically provides a resolution by saying that you have resigned your first position as council members and are now resident on that board. Obviously, that's a pretty draconian result, so it's important that we dot the i's and cross the t's and make sure that that can be done. The primary problem, I think, at this point, with research we've done to date, is that if the city council has the ability to remove members from that board, then we come, we have an incompatibility of office. So, it's an interesting problem. And I think one that might have a solution, you know, we just, we're postulating a couple of possible solutions that means of addressing this, that perhaps could avoid that. The more council members on it, the more difficult that will be to do. I would actually rather see no council members on it. That's, and the reason for that is, the issue from the city attorney's perspective is your control versus risk. By having all of the council members on that board, you have the maximum amount of control, but you also have the maximum amount of risk. If that body engages in some contract or activity that a court finds to be objectionable and gives rise to an award of damages, then by the whole council being on it, you greatly increase the chances that the city itself could be held liable. So, you know, you can either eliminate all control, or you can eliminate all interests, but more likely, what you do is you find a balance there that the council is comfortable with. It's a policy decision, doesn't have to be made now. I think what Mr. Metzler is most concerned about is moving forward with the formation of the entity, and which I've told him we can do without having to decide that at this point. I'd like to have an opportunity in our office to do a little more research and make sure that we're comfortable that you don't accidentally vacate your office.
Well, once the board, whoever this board might be, appointed by the city council, after that, what happens? Are they self-appointed, or?
Well, if, in fact, the solution is that the city council appoints the members of the board, whoever they are, and they might be yourselves, what we would recommend is that the members be appointed, because I've said, you have a problem if you have the right to remove an officer. So if the council, by a majority vote, decided to remove one of you from that body, it would have demonstrated, or even has the right to, even if it didn't, it would create the problem of incompatibility of office. So, what I, and this was a hallway conversation that Keith and I had about 40 minutes ago, but my suggestion was that what could be done is that the council appoints whomever they wish to appoint, you know, five council members, two council members, and that those individuals be given a short term of office of one year, and that the bylaws of the body provide that they cannot be removed during that term of office. So, although you couldn't remove them, they would only be there for a year, so that the problem has a finite solution. You know, it's not like you have to live with this problem forever. Depending where you are in that year, you know, you might have 11 months, or you might have a week to deal with it. So, I thought that, I thought of that as a potential solution. We haven't had a chance to research it, but I think it probably works. So, I think, in your minds, because we don't have to make this decision today, is you need to be thinking about, whomever you appoint, can you live with as a balancing between this risk and control issue? Can you live with having people in that office for a year that you can't remove? At the end of the year, their office would automatically be terminated, and the city would have the right to reappoint whomever they wished to, the council would appoint whomever they wished to the new council. So, as I say, you'll have a constant opportunity to fix any problems that may arise.
I just have one problem. Not too long ago, we had an item that was on the consent calendar, absolutely illegal, and it was going to go ahead and automatically be passed during consent. This, to me, I was going to say smells, brings back that same gut feeling that I had then, and I, I, for one, can't move forward with this unless I get a written understanding from your office, that this thing is safe, that it can go forward, what the risks are. I just don't, I'm not comfortable in passing, because I can't see, we've let people go from the city, we've laid them off, let them go, and we're taking a risk here. I know we could use the money. I know you worked hard on this, Keith. I just, I'm just not comfortable in doing it.
Well, you know, if the council's wish is that we opine on it, then we will certainly do that. Analyze any issues that we see and provide you with our analysis of the legal effect. If that's your direction, we certainly will undertake to do that.
Well, that's mine. I'm just one council member.
Well, I disagree with Ms. Allman, and quite frankly, I'd feel comfortable with Ms. Allman were one of the two council members. I think the two council members, based on the legal explanation, certainly would serve us well. A term limit once a year would be a satisfactory solution there, and rotate it through. Put one from each cycle in the election cycle, or anything they want to do, but putting a annual term limit on that thing, I think is a good check and balance. I have no problem with any two combination of people on this council, or future councils, doing this and looking after the interests of the city. There's been no insidious activity of this sort in the past, as you've alluded to, Ms. Allman. In your mind's eye, it was, but there's nothing there. This is a good explanation of that, of why we need a couple of council members. I really would feel uncomfortable completely just separating the five of us from the decision-making of this particular program. I think you have to have contact with the council, and this is the best approach to that. And certainly, Gene de Bostis comes to mind in terms of the vacating the offices under the rules that you've outlined in previous things, when you're sitting on some kind of a defined board that the state recognizes as an incompatibility, and you immediately vacate your own city council seat. All good intentions, we might set it up, all five of us be there, and the next thing you know, we've kind of screwed up on that, because it's Attorney General of the state or something makes a ruling, and the next thing you know, you've got zero council members, but you've got five members running an EB5 board. So, the two council members, I could support this, and whether it's one year or two years, that's fine, too, and rotate it around. Put two on, and then the next time around, two different ones. Put one from each election cycle, excuse me, define it in that way. In some way, make sure the two council members are there. That's the way I see it. So I could support that, and I would hope that we'd move ahead with this program.
Terry, questions?
I have a three-part question for Keith. I'd like to respond to the exclusivity issue, the court issue, prior consent item issue. Motion. My three-part question to Keith is preceded by something I suspect we may have lost sight of, and that is the Husing Report, which was the original foundation for our decision to move forward with the EB5 program in the first instance. The Husing Report, which the court prepared for this city, specifically for the EB5 program, quantified job generation, direct and indirect, based upon the opportunities that existed at former George Air Force Base. And it seems to me, when we talk about, you know, OGIs, 100 million, 25 million, being able to demonstrate the job creation, that that is our foundation document, that that speaks to the viability of this program and the ability to raise funds and meet the federal guidelines that govern the EB5 program. Or do I misread it, Keith?
You're correct.
With that, then, as a backdrop, my three-part question is this, and they're all integrated. Why wait for the 25 million before we distribute? What happens to the money raised if we don't raise 25 million? And what if the 25 million is raised before the expiration of the 12-month term? And I ask that because it seems to me that if we quickly raise some portion of the 25 million, I'm not happy about the prospect of sending all that money back and saying, because we didn't get to 25 million, that these investments aren't going to pay. So that's kind of the mix of the philosophical questions that I raise.
Thank you for that. The first question-
The first question was why raise only twenty-five million dollars? Right now...
No. Why wait for twenty-five million before we start distributing from the pot?
The way we have it structured, and it wasn't a part of this report, but we do have it internally structured as a part of the first twenty-five million, to allow for interim distribution of tranches. So, the principal responsibility of the limited partnership currently is to raise twenty-five million, but we do have, as you know, as this council knows, an immediate need to get as much cash when we can get it. So if, for example, in sixty days, let's just say, funds of ten million dollars are raised, the way we're currently set up is nothing is going to preclude the early release and having to wait to the twenty-five million dollars.
That, I'm glad to hear that.
But it will be told as a part of the twenty-five million dollars. What happens to twenty-five million dollars?
Now, the second part of the question, which you've already answered as well, what happens to the money if we don't get to the twenty-five million? You've already answered, we're going to have interim distribution, so you've answered one and two.
Right.
Then the third part, what if we raise the twenty-five million before the expiration of the initial twelve-month term?
And we can do that. That would be subject to the nonprofit making that decision that there is a qualified investment, that the need for funds is to be raised. They would solicit, that would be open to the competitive process that I spoke of, and the nonprofit would be responsible for soliciting entities that are qualified and capable to raise those funds. Certainly, Inland would be eligible to compete, but it would also be a consideration of the nonprofit to consider other entities.
Well, that ties into the exclusivity issue. I would make this comment from a business perspective. Having been involved with this program since its inception, I think it's important that we all remember that this city didn't create the EB5 concept. Feed money and the risk capital, and the talent, and the resources to move this thing forward to the point where we're at tonight, in large measure, was because of the willingness of Inland to take this EB5 concept, invest the money with people who are experts in this field, from both legal standpoint and consultants. And as one member of this council, I don't have a problem, call it exclusive or whatever, allowing somebody who goes at great expense and risk to build something for this city that results in cash flow, that allows us to do what some of us have campaigned for almost forty years to do, and that's create jobs and enhance economic activity. I am not going to be timid about saying to somebody who labors in the vineyard at their own risk, you get a period of time to recoup your investment. And we all talk about running this, in some respects, as a business. Yes, we are a municipal corporation, and we do have constraints, but, you know, if we're going to shut everybody off who might have a new idea, or a concept that's going to benefit this city, and we tell them, yeah, you go out and do all the spade work, you put all the money at risk, and then you compete head-to-head with somebody who sits back and reaps the benefits of your work, I think we'll end up stifling economic opportunity and investment in our city. Urges all to be careful about setting up rigid barriers that may come back as a problem. As to the board issue, I think we're making a big deal out of nothing. My profession, and Green's profession sometimes is referred to as form over substance. I for one would be just as happy to not have a board that involves anybody from the city council. I've got confidence in the city manager, I've got confidence in you, I've got confidence in our legal staff, I've got more meetings to go to than I got time. I spent all day here today doing meetings. I'd be just as happy that the board consists of the people that we trust, and that we pay money, because you are the experts in the field. If it has to be a board, having listened to Mr. Green's concerns, having lived through the Gene DeBlossis issue of incompatibility of office, I really wonder why we would take that risk. I think, and I'm like Mr. Rothschild, I'd rather see us make our decisions tonight and get this thing going. I know of investors we've lost, because we can't, as a city, you know, get to a point of finalizing this. Why not start out with a board that doesn't consist of any council people? And then when Mr. Green and his firm have completed their research, and have given us the memorandum, so we all know what the pros and cons and pitfalls are, then revisit the issue. Do we stay with a governance board that is staff, Mr. Cox and you, and perhaps Mr. D. Portnoyaski, or whomever would come from the city manager's office? Revisit it at that point, but don't delay getting this thing going. There are competitors to our regional center. There are people all over the United States that are hustling potential investors for their own community. And I just shudder to think that we're going to take another two, three, four, five weeks, whatever, to let this thing continue to float. So, my position, my vote tonight, Rothschild, to go forward tonight, I'm prepared to vote. And if the council is inclined to want to have two members, then I support that the two members be Ms. Alman, and perhaps the mayor. That's my contribution to this discussion. As to the issue of last year, and the consent item, I have to say, I am disappointed that that issue has been resurrected. It's been dealt with multiple times, and I don't know what the application of that issue is to this, but if it gives anybody on this council a greater sense of involvement and security, I'm perfectly prepared to defer to anybody who wants to take on another committee assignment. Urgent to be Alman, and then whomever else, perhaps, if the mayor thinks is appropriate.
Just a couple comments. I'm ready to move forward on this tonight as well, but I would exclude 1A until we do have an opinion from the city attorney's office with respect to the formation of the board. You know, there's all this other stuff that you still have to do, and with respect to whether or not council members sit on the board, or we don't, how many that is. I didn't get a great feeling from our city attorney tonight that that issue has been completely researched, and I think until we have a strong, sound opinion from our city attorney, we ought to hold off on just that portion of it, but move forward with the rest of it. With respect to the budget, and the travel and the meeting expenses, I don't have a problem leaving that in there, but I would like to say this. When I go to buy a car, or I go to buy clothes, or I go to buy anything, I go to where I'm going to buy it. And it just does not make any sense to me that we ought to be flying to China, or to India, or Korea, or anywhere else in the world to promote this, when in essence, they're going to be investing in here. I think they need to be coming here, I think they need to be, actually see what they're investing in, because, I don't know about you, but I wouldn't want to part with five-hundred-thousand dollars sight unseen. And it makes more sense for those folks to come to us, and not us to go to them. So, I would hope that even though you've got it as a part of the budget, that where that, where we're actually going to see these investors is them spending their dime to come here, to really determine whether or not they want to make the investment here. I don't really think that we should be flying to China, or to India, or anywhere else, to try to woo them to come here. If they want to come here, they need to come here, and they need to realize what they're investing in, and not do it sight unseen. But that's my comments on it. I'm ready to move forward, with the exception of 1A, because in my opinion, I don't think we have a strong enough opinion from our city manager's office, and I'd like to see that before we formally appoint a board.
Mr. Cox?
Mr. Mayor, council, somewhere, I'm kind of a Johnny come lately in this, so I'm going to make sure I don't muck this up. My understanding was it's a nonprofit corporation, needs to be filed, needs to be formed. Green, I think, can tell you, that's not terribly difficult, that there's a set of bylaws and the state approval that goes along, and that's going to determine who's going to sit on your board.
Well, the formation for state purposes is easy. Then you have to submit for approval by the IRS as a nonprofit. Depending on what you're doing, and how it's set up, that can be easy or very difficult.
But the bylaws can designate how the board is selected, and I think they will want that as a part of the application.
I believe they probably will.
And probably will determine that less than a quorum of the board can set, but I think you'll have to do that. I've been involved with nonprofits, and that's generally the way that a requirement is set up. Secondly, in the adoption, and in a condition of the fund of the nonprofit can be a condition of the approval without waiting for it, because it's going to follow the same procedure of the illegality until you do that, but it can be approved, subject to that. Second is that you are awarded a regional center. And the wording, I think, has to be with the council's understanding that this is the city, and you're doing it on the basis that it is the city. The application was not signed apparently by the city, or John Roberts, the city manager, but John Roberts, it needs to be clear, that that is to be amended, modified, changed, that it's not the individual, and it's not me, and it's not John Roberts, and that if there is an individual, then it's an individual representing, or the council's designated. This does not need to come back and haunt you, and primarily because of the admonition and that signee, that as a designated regional center, you have responsibilities in the administration oversight and the management. And that's specific in the awarding. And I also raised the question today, that the letter of understanding from Inland is something I just simply want the attorney to look at, because it states that they're acting as the general partner for the regional center. And I was under the understanding that the regional center would operate as its own, and they would operate as a general partner that's separate, and there could even be the limited partner. I discussed that with Keith, he felt that I misunderstood the designation of a general partner, limited partner, except that I pointed out in the letter of agreement, that the city of Victorville has integrated Group One shall act as the general partner that is formed solely to do these things. If you read that, I'm, I just want the attorney to approve the language, because it seems to be designating another entity to act as the general partner, and to act as the managing entity, or the managing partner for the regional center, and the regional center is you. If I read this correctly, you've designated somebody else to act on your behalf. I don't think that was the intent, might have been, I don't know, I wasn't here, but if you read...
I don't think it was the intent either, Mr. Cox.
I don't think it was the intent, but it seems to say that, not particularly in the letter from, that we received, or in any of the documentation we've prepared in the applications, and none of the information that we've submitted, but it seems to clearly indicate that in the letter of understanding, Exhibit E.
I will tell you that I read it the same way that Mr. Metzler did, but the fact that it could cause confusion on your part means there needs to be revision. So, we'll make that clear.
I discussed with Keith if he felt that they could internally manage that, be responsible, manage the regional center, be responsible for the record-keeping, and meet all the requirements that's going to be accompanying this. It was his belief that they could do so, they were equipped to do so, and the purpose of the limited partner, or the partnership, was to actually go out, sell the programs, find the investors, and bring them to the regional center, but the regional center would manage itself. Like, with that understanding, I don't see any revision.
I'd like to see it fixed, people.
I've looked through this, and I had a meeting with Keith this morning, and with Mr. Cox. My concerns were, that I expressed to them, were, their response evaded my concerns. The only question is, is the board? And I know, I know you mentioned the consent calendar thing, but when I seen the paper this morning, and I seen that, I had a flashback, too, just from a reaction. And, but I know nonprofits can have three members, or four members, it's, you know, whatever you...
They have a lot of members.
Whatever, yeah, or more. I think, if I'm not correct, Keith, correct me, your recommendation would be that the board would consist of the two council members and the city manager, that would be the board?
Correct.
And no one else?
Correct.
But we still need to probably look through, get a good reading from the attorney's office in regard to that.
I believe that's going to prove to be doable, but I don't want to tell you that it is until we have a little more time.
And I know Mr. Cox is correct, I've worked with nonprofits, too, so you do have a process you go to, but your board can be, like, again, it can be two, three, four, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really, it's up to the organizer's...
It doesn't...
It could be three.
I mean, it has to be at least three, right?
Well, I think it can be two, I'm not sure.
Well, the three is the directors or state formation, I think, is that provision, but, yeah, I myself serve on a board of a nonprofit that has twenty-one members. I will tell you that it takes forever to get anything done.
But I understand the process, I understand the process here, and the regional center, the R-CBD, then would be that board, and they would control the regional center, or the activities of the regional center. Your limited partnership, then, is the one that collects the money, or goes out and markets and gets the money, and then the borrower would be, we have SCLA, but it could be any other entity within the city. And so I'm pretty comfortable with that. The thing that the council has to recognize that, the, once you have this board in place, they don't, they don't, they don't report to us.
They do, they do not answer to you.
Answer to, okay.
I would expect that there would be reports, which I don't think interfere with the, or create a problem under incompatibility of office, but they don't answer to you, and more importantly, you cannot remove them, and that's why I've suggested the limited-term solution. So you have, and actually, I think you expanded that to a better concept, which is probably have it on a rotating basis, or whatever the council wants, but not have both members go off at the same time, because then you lose any continuity. So maybe the first time out, one gets a two-year term, one gets a one-year term, and thereafter, they're all one-year terms. So just, that's just so we have somebody coming off each year, and leaving some continuity of management and knowledge on the board.
At the election date, is that...
You know, it's whatever you choose. Personally, I would rather just see it, rather than tie it to elections, just have it be either a calendar year, fiscal year arrangement.
Yeah, but you could get, you could get off the council and have your year running if you don't get it coincided down. You'd be, there'd be, there could be as much as six months of a non-council member sitting in the seat.
Well, I don't know off the top of my head, when would be the last time, when are the elections finalized, what month?
Well, you get it certified...
First of December? So if you had it effective, you did your appointments on January 1, you would know who was on the board, and you wouldn't be reappointing anybody that got elected off.
And your bylaws for the nonprofit then would, without knowing how your board members are appointed?
If I may, just to supplement that thought, and the question as to the board, you know, the way it's proposed right now, having to report back to this council, it might be a technical answer, that technically, that board does not have to report back to this council. However, clearly, one of the board members, as it's proposed, does report to this council, and should definitely expect to get reports back either through that board member, or even through the staff, who, you know, right now, under the current structure, is the Department of Economic Development that clearly reports to this council.
In a structure that I work on for another entity, another city, we had a nonprofit. For the liability purposes, the council decided not to have council members sit on it, but they, they had the right to select the appointees. And in that circumstance, it worked very well. And in that circumstance, it worked very well, because they had short terms of office, and council was able to address issues as they came along. In addition, that body entered into a contract with the city, trying to remember, this is the city, the agent, this is the city, to provide staff to that body, which enabled the nonprofit then to be able to identify cost factors, because of the cost of the staff that they were paying the city for. And then there was a, you know, payment that flows through, which is more than just nominal, because in fact, you've got staff spending a fair amount of time, being also the staff of this nonprofit. So, that's a good, good way to do it, too. I think it may be a, an agreement with the regional board that the city provide certain staff, you know, the city manager is on their board, perhaps Mr. Metzler could be the executive director, and the finance director could be their finance director and that sort of thing. And then they get billed for those services on an annual basis, and that's a source of repayment to you.
Couple last comments. I, I agree with, with Ryan regarding the, the product is here, so to the extent that we can bring the people that are interested here, then I think that will work better for us, and it will keep our costs down. And then the other, my last comment would be that we also expended a lot of funds on this project, over $600,000. So, it was, it was our city money, and it's over $600,000 that was spent on this project. So, I just want the public to know that, that we, we have a stake in it, too, monetarily, so.
A stake that we built a mechanism for us to be repaid, reimbursed.
Exactly. So, having said that, I, I don't have a problem with, with the, with the proposal. I'd just like to make sure that we take care of item number one on the board, and then...
Well, I guess the question then is how you'd like to proceed today, what actions you'd like to, and then how you would like us to bring back the resolution, not the resolution, I used the wrong term here, but the, the proposal for the bylaws for your consideration.
Well, can we move forward, the motion would be to move forward and then just come back, because that's going to take time.
Yeah.
It's not going to be done...
I'm prepared to move the staff recommendation with the exception of item 1A, which would be deleted at this time, subject to staff bringing 1A back for this council to consider at a subsequent meeting.
Second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Move for adjournment of the meeting? Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second. I'll listen, favor?
Aye.